What, did you switch places?
I've got to take my whole seat back. I felt comfortable being closer to you.
Well, I thought since John was the vice mayor of it was... Do what, Shelly?
Does she get something for the meeting?
She what?
Does she work on something for the meeting?
Yeah, I think she's, I don't know, whether she's making-
I'll hold up until she gets-
Agenda copies or, I don't, I don't know.
Kind of rumbling outside.
Yes.
Kind of rumbling outside.
Yes.
I thought that was that.
Lots of going to happen.
We've actually had lightning pretty much-
Oh, did you what? Couldn't deny it then?
I've got a, I've got an app that tells me when the lightning's close and it's been going off pretty much all afternoon.
Oh, really?
So, but the storms have all, they were east of us earlier and now they're west of us, so moving away from us. It's headed southwest, which is-
Kingfisher got a warning a little while ago.
Yeah.
Kind of unusual, this is the middle of July.
It's been a very rainy year.
And not having 100 degree temperatures, it's very nice.
I like that part.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything since July without thunder is nice.
Yeah.
If we get through August without them, I'll be, I'll really be excited. I'll probably ask them for too much.
They'll still be harvesting in September.
At this rate, yes. You get one day a week, basically. Some days you, or some weeks you get 12 hours. Cut fast.
We always had those Pennsys celebrations in August because I was like, why are we doing this in August? Why, well, they always do it that way in August.
Yeah. End of August, first of September. It was always really close to my part.
Because I was like, it doesn't do in September. Well, then school started.
Yeah.
But, so it's August.
You said you were working on something.
We're good. We've just started.
Oh, okay. Okay. When you started, this is the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
John?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
David?
Here.
Report from Town of Hennessy Ad hoc Agencies.
I've got some stuff. Or do you want me to do it at the end with citizens' comments?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to address the car show. And I just have some thanks that I'd like to do. So, first, I want to thank Harold Shaw for all the work it took to book, raise money, and to prepare for the go-kart races. It was one of Hennessy's biggest two-day events, and that's really important to get people to stay overnight. It's a huge benefit to the whole community. I want to thank Scotty Hike and the many others who helped with the go-kart races and car show, along with Harold. Thank you Tiffany, as well as the entire town staff for helping with the ODOT and the dozens of other things it took that we didn't even know about that it took to make the show work. Thank you Alyssa and the entire town crew. I get on Main Street about 7:00 a.m. and Alyssa beat me there. And she was already working with those, with the guys to get the traffic working and things like that. And then I left the fireworks at 10:30 and Alyssa and the town crew was still there. So, they put in a very full day to make this a successful day for our town. I want to thank Chief Solis and all the police officers that worked with us on this event, because I know this was challenging to them. Thank you Brian and his crew for working in the sun all day setting up the wonderful fireworks display. Did you bring food or did you do anything to that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. And thank you Shelly. I didn't write that down, but thank you Shelly, okay. Thank you Burke, where it's not here, and his crew for heading up the car show parking and the judging, because that was like hurting ants. Thank you David for your work on the gun raffle and raising money for Hennessy United. I know we had a lot of people at that booth and they were really interested in the big machine gun. I want to thank Randy and Chief Scott, he's not here today, and the firefighters for their help throughout the weekend. We did a lot, had the race car thing and then during the burnouts and stuff like that. Thank you John and the entire board for supporting this very successful event. I want to thank Mark and Susan Henry and her crew, their crew, for the successful burnout, go-stop-go event. Thank you Debbie Hickey and her crew for making the vendor area, vendor area a success. Thank you Sheriff Pitts and the deputies who helped patrolling during this event with their really cool four-wheeler thing. I wanted to thank Hennessy United and their support for the tables, tents, set up and tear down. That was a huge amount of work. Thank you Keith Bachman with CHS for putting up with us during peak harvest. And finally, thank you to all the companies and individuals who donated money, time, or merchandise to make this event a success. This is something I just felt like I needed to address here. I think the camera fell asleep by me. Hold on. Nope, it's still working.
Still there.
This is to all the haters, and I think all of us felt this, that we're getting a lot of harsh comments calling us things like communists and USA haters for not doing the fireworks on the Fourth of July. All I can say is if you paid attention, attended meetings, and got involved, you would have known why it was done as it was. The next time you pick up your keyboard to write hate about someone, think about the hardworking people who spent time putting this, putting on events like this for you to enjoy. This year's fireworks was the highest attendance of any I can remember in the past 20 years. We've got many thanks saying that now we can go see what other towns are doing on the Fourth. If I forgot to thank someone, I apologize. Thank you.
I live off, I want to thank Mike for building a parking lot there in the back.
Actually, that was on here and I didn't type it, but oh, continued.
Also want to thank Graham Spurrie for mowing and cleaning the rodeo branch and ran it up. I really want, I won't go through the whole list. I think I've made the Facebook post to thank everybody for sponsoring the event. They're going to try to make that a yearly show, you know, so that's a good thing. County people in Hennessy stepped up and made that a big event. That was the biggest grandstand them kids have had at any of their shows. There was probably almost 800 people in attendance just into the go-kart thing. So, so, you know, that's, you know, applaud to us, people that came here, you know, they enjoyed the meet and greet, enjoyed the nursing home trip, and there's a lot of work that went into it. And I appreciate everybody that supported it and, you know, that came out and made it a successful event, so. But now we got a nice parking lot back there in the back, you know, hopefully we can use it for the rodeo.
Yeah, I'm gonna make everyone else's comments. It was a great show. The races went great. Harold, thank you. Kirk's crew always does a great job. I've been to several of their events over the years and, yeah. Thank you guys for putting all this together, so. All right, number three, consider approval of consent agenda. Approval, approval of the minutes of the previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows. General Fund, $47,552.41. The RSTF, $35,333.30. That's a lot of threes. Library Fund, $3,519.10. And the previous month's claims, $2,668.74. Town Treasurers Report. That's, it's all still under the consent agenda? Treasurers Report? Or did I skip it? No?
No, it's-
It's all on there?
Yeah. It was emailed out earlier because we've been having problems with that agenda posting and unposting and-
Yeah, I know. I've got a lot of updates. My email's been going crazy and every time I go to get in there to approve something, it's gone, so, okay, well, I guess I don't need to. Discussion and possible actions. Does this need to be moved down out of the consent agenda or just leave it in there? Okay. Discussion with possible action to approve inter-local cooperation agreement with Hennessy Public Schools to provide a school resource officer. And then 3.5 is quarterly financial report by Crawford and Associates.
I got to ask you a question. Since I went here at the gym meeting, will I be able to bug on that?
Yeah, you can because there's so many other items in there that would need your approval as well. It's not rare to see that happen.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, you know.
Sure, yeah.
If not, I need to move that 3, 4 down.
Are there any questions? Anything? Discussion?
Nothing, Randy.
All right, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, number four, citizens' comments. Yes.
It's regarding H2A. It'll have to go in the H2A if it's regarding water bills.
So, it's, okay, so this is, this is-
Is it regarding water bills? Yes. It'll be in there, that H2A.
So, it'll be in the next meeting. We actually have two meetings.
Okay.
So.
Counter five.
Okay. Town Administrators Report.
Uh, yes, just a few things. The grant projects, the municipal road drilling activity fund. For Mitchell Road, we're still waiting the money from the state. I think they're waiting money from the feds, so we don't know exactly how long that's going to take. They said it should be anytime. The REIT bids are due July 22nd at 10:00 a.m. We'll do bid opening. The rig grant, which is the bulk water station, we have a construction meeting with F5 on July 25th at 10:00 a.m. The swimming pool, the last day is August 10th. OML Conference, I've heard from Kelly, but I still need to know if anyone is planning to attend that so we can get it registered. We are having a town employee pool party July 31st at 6:30 from 6:30 to 8:30. You're more than welcome to come and bring your, bring your family. We've been working hard the past couple of weeks and this week to get to complete year-end so we can start the new fiscal year. Records request, we've had one, one other records request and it was regarding zoning for a property. And then the county property, we're going to be getting with the, I can't even think of their names.
Porterfield.
Porterfield surveying to get that surveyed so we can get that switched over.
Thank you Tiffany. Six point one. Discussion with possible action to approve engagement with Arledge and Associates to conduct fiscal year 2024-2025 annual audit. Second.
Carol?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item seven, executive session. Discussion, discussion with possible action to enter into executive session for confidential communication with our attorney pending court action, Esther Gonzalez Ramirez versus Town of Hennessy case. CJ 2023-77 in District Court of Kingfisher County, as authorized by 25 OS 307, Section B4. I make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
I make a motion to adjourn executive session.
Randy?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
We're gonna get logged in here again. Okay, number eight, any new business?
Just, since there is an item listed there, no action needed on 7.4.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask.
No, no action needed on 7.4. We'll move on. Number eight, any new business, any matter not known of which could be reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section 311-9, Title 25 OS. Number nine, council person's report. John?
I have nothing.
David?
Nothing, sir.
Harold?
Nothing.
I don't have anything either. Number 10, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Okay. Town of Hennessy, Hennessy Utility Authority of Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
John?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Burke?
Number two, consider approval of consent agenda. The minutes from the previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows. Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, $71,941.36. Previous month, Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, $370.99. Discussion with possible action to approve engagement with Arledge and Associates to conduct fiscal year 2024-2025 annual audit. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Okay, number three, citizens' comments.
I'm Kelly Wallace and I have several commercial properties here in town. And I'm here to formally lodge a complaint regarding multiple instances of gross overbilling by the Town of Hennessy for commercial properties that I own, including the most recent and most severe case at 1341 South Main. I've since learned upon coming into the meeting that a number was transposed resulting in a bill of over $1,176. I'm assuming it will be addressed, however, I've not yet formally disputed this bill with the city office because I first received the bill after 5:00 on Friday, and I conducted my own investigation this weekend, of which the actual meter reading on the physical meter currently installed on Saturday was 17,002.81, while the bill reflects a previous reading of 17,914, which would have reflected a May 15th reading. So, it's a blatant discrepancy. Not to mention the meter ID listed on the bill is number 27695749, while the physical meter attached to the property is labeled 93915208. This suggests that either a wrong meter is being billed or the system has recorded inaccurate data. This is the fourth time I've been grossly overcharged by the Town of Hennessy for unexplained water usage in a matter of 12 months. A recent previous incident, which happened to be last month, occurred at another commercial property located at 1061 South Main, which my husband occupies. That property has minimal to no water usage, yes, yet we were billed four times the normal usage. When I inquired at the city office, I was told I must have a leak or a running toilet, which is not the case. However, this is the automatic response by everyone in the office. I was also told that someone had probably plugged in a water hose and used the water, an implausible explanation for which there's no evidence. In the same instance, I was told, and I quote, "Take my complaint to the board." And I was also told that if they adjusted bills for everyone that has a huge bill, the city would be broke. So, my question, exactly how many residents in the town have high bill issues? Back to my visit at the office on June 30th to pick up the field test I requested on June 15th, I was told I had not requested a field test soon enough. Because the field test didn't show the gross usage of water and a few days were missing from the beginning of the field test because it doesn't go back further than 34 days, which also failed to prove the water use. However, no one ever informed me that there was a time window for requesting such a test. Adding to my concern, I was told that anytime an abnormally high reading comes through, city staff are notified, which will reach out to the property owner, and no one contacted me regarding any elevated usage at either property. Further compounding my concerns is the vague and dismissive explanation I was given that the reading was, and I quote, "Oh, it's a radio read." When I asked for clarification, I noticed a shift in tone as the staff themselves suspected such reads might be unreliable. Yet, when questioned, the only explanation that was offered, that it was a radio that read it, and I was given no explanation as to what could cause it to produce false or inflated data. Actually, the city staff accepts no fault in any of their readings and seem to be plumbing experts, as well as experts in water meters and reading, and readers by maintaining their equipment as faultless, placing blame for the inaccuracy back on the property occupant as having a leak or plumbing issues. Another concern is the way city personnel hesitate when citing this method of, oh, it was a radio read. That suggests there may be a known issue with the system. Given the repeated nature of these billing issues with not only my properties, but I'm speaking on behalf of the many citizens that experience the same, the city's failure to notify me about usage and inconsistencies in meter identification and reading methods, and especially the flagrancy and lack of concern by the city office, I respectfully request the following of the Board of Trustees. Correction of the usage based on the actual meter reading of 17,002.81, taken on 7/5 of 25, which is at the 1341 South Main meter. Verification of the meter ID associated with that account and property. I'd like an explanation of the radio read system, its reliability and its known issues, and an explanation of why I wasn't notified about high usage despite city office claims that this is standard procedure. I'd like a complete review of past billing anomalies at all affected properties, including 409 North Main, 1061 South Main, and 1341 South Main. Board, this isn't an isolated billing mistake. It's part of an ongoing pattern of overcharges that are dismissed without evidence, investigation, or recourse. The burden is repeatedly placed on me as the property owner and to the citizens of Hennessy to prove their innocence while the city offers no transparency in return. Now, I could have hired a plumber in all my instances and paid over double the water bill to find the same result, I've found which is nothing is wrong with my plumbing. And I still would have had to pay the water bill, plus the plumber's fee at over $120 an hour, plus the cost of repairing the cement tear up it would have taken. And when I questioned the staff at the office about the fact that I had changed nothing at the 409 Center last year after two months of gross usage showing a meter reading of consistently 161 gallons per hour running through the meter for 24 hours over a 30-day period, I was told that I had a plumber come in and fix my problem. There again, they're not only plumbing experts, they're speculative investigators as well, and I challenge them to prove that accusation. I clearly can go on and on and plenty more to say, but I'll leave it to these final comments. I'm requesting a fair, fact-based review and corrections of these persistent issues by you, the board, and not the city office clerks. I encourage you to review and investigate the issues of the meters, meter reading discrepancies and procedures, as well as policies and procedures, this ongoing issue that you may be unaware of until now. Do you have any questions or comments?
I don't think so.
I have paperwork to document, I mean, to back up everything I've said. And I'm sure that, or you have permission from me to pull any numbers you need to on any of my properties to investigate?
Obviously, I have any questions.
Obviously, something to-
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Kelly, if you don't mind, I want you to share that document that you just read off of with me.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like it too. I'll have to, after the meeting, if I could get your email address?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, thank you for bringing the concerns up and it's obviously something we'll look into and investigate and see if we can come to a solution and hopefully handle these situations better in the future. Thank you. Number four, other scheduled business. Five, new business, any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section 311-9, Title 25 OS. Number six, council person's report. John's nothing.
David? Nothing, sir. Carol?
Randy, I got something to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Meeting, our monthly meeting that we had in May, when you was elected mayor. I supported you. I voted for you. But when you took the chair, you apologized for something I said. And I've been, a lot of people have asked me why I didn't say something then. I didn't want it to seem like people, you know, that I ain't going to support you as a mayor because I am. But from now on, I wish you would not apologize for anything I said. I said it. I meant it. And, you know, I'll be my own man and take my own actions for handling responsibility. So, you know, I don't- So, you know, I don't know how the other board members felt, but that's just the way I felt about it. You know, I'm going to support you as the mayor.
Appreciate that.
You know, I just, like I said, I said what I said, and I meant enough to take my own consequences, whatever happens, it happens.
So, I actually never did mention your name with anything that I said.
Whatever buddy name.
Well, that's, that's, that's not a mind telling. My, my reason for saying what I said was I felt like when you made those phone calls and you said what you said, you represented the Town of Hennessy and the Board of Trustees. And so by doing that, you also were representing myself. And so that's why I said that. I just felt like it needed to be addressed. And, and there was, there was absolutely, I mean, there's no hard feelings here as far as I'm concerned, and I completely understand that. But I felt like coming from an official role, that that needed to come, not necessarily from the mayor, just that was my personal that I felt like that was representing the board and we didn't all feel the same way, so.
Awesome. Because that, that meeting often was real good, you know, but I'll just keep my mouth shut on that. But just to show you no hard feelings, you know, keep the work up.
I'm actually.
Second.
Carol?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.